Good evening. At this time, I would like to welcome everyone to the Town of Lexington Council Meeting. This meeting is being held at Town Hall Monday evening, June 3rd, 2019. This meeting is being broadcast live and will be replayed several times over the next week on the town's information channel, 1301, and will also be available for viewing on the town's website at L E X S C dot com. I'm Steve McDougall, the Mayor of Lexington. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you my fellow council members. To my left is Councilmember Todd Cornes.
Good evening.
To his left is Councilmember Steve Baker.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ron Williams.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Todd Lyle.
Good evening.
At this time, we will ask for invocation for tonight's meeting. We don't have a pastor with us that's visiting with us this week, so I always go to my go-to guy, Mr. Todd Cornes, if you would not mind leading us in invocation for tonight's meeting.
Be glad to. Let's pray. Father, we do pause tonight, and we first just want to give thanks. We know that all good things come from above, and it's just appropriate to stop and give thanks. And we also mourn today. We lost a great man in our community, Chris McCutcheon. And so we pray for the McCutcheon family who suffered that great loss, and just pray a lot of grace in their life. And we pray for great wisdom as we move forward, that you would help us to strive for what's right, make great decisions, and bring not only prosperity, but to bring goodness, health, joy to our community. That's our goal, that's why we serve, and we ask for your wisdom to do that, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Todd. At this time, if anyone would still, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. I will call the meeting to order. Tonight's agenda, are there any deletions on tonight's agenda? Anyone have anything they'd like to delete off the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move right into presentations. Our first presentation this evening will be a proclamation read by Councilmember Ron Williams. It's a proclamation, May 15th through June 15th, 2019, as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month, and June 4th, 2019, as Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day. Ms. Heather Ramsey is here with us this evening. Ms. Heather, if you would, please come forward, join us at the microphone. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Whereas Tourette Syndrome is a neurodevelopmental disorder that becomes evident in early childhood or adolescence, and is part of the spectrum of tic disorders which are characterized by motor and vocal tics, and whereas current estimates are that one out of every 160 children between the ages of five and 17 in the United States has Tourette Syndrome, and whereas it is common for people with Tourette Syndrome to be affected by another co-occurring condition, such as attention deficit hyperactivity disorder and obsessive-compulsive disorder, and whereas one of the most difficult aspects of this condition is the lack of public awareness and the unjustified and unfortunate reactions to patients with this disorder, and whereas each year the Tourette Association of America recognizes May 15th through June 15th as Tourette Awareness Month, and affiliated chapters of the TSA and other organizations across the country embark on campaigns to educate the public, healthcare professionals, and educators about this underdiagnosed and often misunderstood neurological condition. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Mayor and Council for the Town of Lexington that May 15th till June 15th, 2019 is hereby declared to be Tourette Syndrome Awareness Month, and that June 4th, 2019 is hereby declared to be the Tourette Syndrome Awareness Day, and that all citizens are urged to raise awareness and understanding of Tourette Syndrome and to promote support for individuals and families who are affected by this disorder, dated the 3rd day of June, 2019. Would you like to introduce some of the folks that are with you?
Yes, please. I really appreciate the support the Mayor and the councilmembers have given to us. This is personal for me because I have Tourette Syndrome, as do both of my kids, and because awareness is lacking, I started a support group, and hopefully through these efforts, we'll be able to reach people in Lexington and the greater Lexington area that previously would have suffered in silence. Our support group is the Greater Carolinas Tourette Support Group, and I cover North Carolina and South Carolina. With me, I have my mother, Sherri Kimble, South Carolina; I have Representative Paula Calhoun, adjunct professor of USC, and retired teacher Linda Sinclair, retired teacher Ms. Gail Ellsworth, and a fellow, two fellow Touretters, Haley Bong and Deanna Lee.
Very nice having you all. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. I'm cheering for it.
You guys want to work here? Quick question?
Get the stuff again. Come there.
You'll get fun?
We next.
Yeah, definitely.
No, do your next.
All right, go on, Sherri.
She's a professional.
She's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Calhoun, thank you very much for being with us this evening. We're welcoming you to our council meeting and glad you're here with us. At this time, I will have a vision plan update for the Town of Lexington for June 2019. We had another triumphant year at the Lexington Live Spring Concert Series with great crowds of more than 1,000 people each week. We look forward to seeing everyone again as the series continues in the fall. Start your summer vacation with a free movie in the park. Thursday, June 6th, 8:30, we will show The Secret Life of Pets at the Ice House Amphitheater. That's the closest thing to a drive-in I've ever been to, being at the amphitheater with that screen on stage. They don't make drive-ins anymore, so I thought it was pretty neat that it felt like one. Celebrate our nation's birthday as the Town of Lexington welcomes the 246th Army Band to the Ice House Amphitheater on Friday, June 28th at 7:30 PM for a free show featuring a variety of music from the decades of the Army Band. Also, a free fireworks display over Main Street will follow the concert at 9:00 PM. We are excited to welcome country sensation Palmer Lee to the Ice House Amphitheater on Wednesday, July 3rd. Tickets are on sale now at IceHouseAmphitheater.com. Please visit that website for a full calendar of events. That concludes our vision plan update. Oh, I'm sorry, it does not. Thank you. Second page there. So, the wine walk was this past Friday night. It was a make-up date that followed unfortunate cancellation, but as always, our wine walk was a huge hit this past Friday. More than 1,500 people attended with proceeds going to the Lexington Beautification Foundation, a volunteer nonprofit organization dedicated to the pursuit of beautifying our scenic and historic community. This year's funds will go directly to the enhancements at the Virginia Hilton Park. Learn more about that project and all of our vision plan initiatives at L E X S C dot com. Also, at the Ice House is the Market at the Ice House. It is in full swing and is a huge success at the Ice House Amphitheater. Join us each Saturday at 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM until September 28th. We will take off the weekend of July 4th, and that will be July 6th. We will be closed that Saturday. The Market at the Ice House, primarily intended for a farmer grower and local artisan market that uses a community-friendly atmosphere to promote, support, and encourage local production while educating citizens on the benefits of eating local, fresh produce and supporting local artists, and the Certified SC Program. To learn more about the Market at the Ice House and which vendors will be in attendance each week, visit our Facebook page at Market@IceHouse. That concludes the vision plan update for June. At this time, I will ask Councilmember Baker if he would handle the traffic update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, work for the new sign structure on the I-20 exit ramp at 378 has begun. Foundation's complete, and the structure is expected to be installed by the end of the month. Once completed, travelers from I-20 wishing to access Ginny Lane will proceed to the ramp traffic signal and make a right-hand turn on a 378 westbound, and then into the dedicated left turn lane in order to turn onto Ginny Lane. Construction has begun on a new deceleration lane in front of Walmart and Chick-fil-A on 378 Sunset Boulevard. This project is funded by the Chick-fil-A Corporation as part of their building permit process. Construction is expected to last about eight weeks. Please use caution in and around this area. The next traffic committee meeting is scheduled for July 10th in the third-floor conference room of Town Hall. Finally, if you are aware of a traffic signal issue, unsafe roadway situation, or a pothole that needs repair, please call 358-7273 and let us know. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker, for that traffic update. At this time, we'll move right into public hearings. Speakers are limited to five minutes in the public hearings. Our first public hearing is final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map, number 4496-05-042, located at 156 Gibbon Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none, moving on. Item number two, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map, number 3420-01-046, located at 113 Pilgrim Point Drive. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance adopting alternate election years for the Town of Lexington municipal election. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. Final reading of an ordinance for a budget amendment, Parks Department. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Item number five, final reading of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. And finally, item number six, final reading of an ordinance to provide the fiscal year 2019-2020 tax levy. Anyone here wish to speak to that? Hearing none. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. We will move right into old business. Our first item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map, number 4300-04-181, located at 339 Cherokee Trail. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Tanner Kevin Conley owns one acre located at 339 Cherokee Trail and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, and Cherokee Trail is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their May meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this parcel. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Ms. Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. Final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map, number 4496-05-042, located at 156 Gibbon Drive. Councilmember Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Romy and Sandy Nelson own one acre located at 156 Gibbon Drive and have petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in town near this one are zone-protected residential, too, and Gibbon Drive is classified as a local road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their May meeting and recommended protected residential zoning for the property and local road classification for Gibbon Drive. Mr. Mayor, make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Item number three, final reading of an ordinance annexing Lexington County tax map, number 3420-01-046, located at 113 Pilgrim Point Drive. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Brittany Espy owns a parcel located at 113 Pilgrim Point Drive and has petitioned to annex the property. A single-family home is being constructed on the site. Properties in the town near this one are zone-protected residential, and Pilgrim Point is an RL6 road. The Planning Commission reviewed this annexation during their May meeting and recommended the same zoning and road classification for this property. I'll make a motion for final approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Manis, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an ordinance adopting alternate election years for Town of Lexington municipal elections. Councilmember Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Lexington County registrations and elections, as well as the Municipal Association of South Carolina, recommends that all municipalities move their elections to the odd years to avoid confusion at the polls during the busier presidential elections. It also helps them better address any issues and makes the election a smoother process for the citizens. Council moved to the odd years in 2009 and voted to return even-year elections in 2014. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes, second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Williams.
Mr. Poole, will the Town incur any additional expense since we're doing it separate election?
The Election Commission reports that it might actually, that it wouldn't, shouldn't cost any more, might be a little bit less, but probably looking at about the same amount. I think it generally runs about $5,000 an election.
Super. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Final reading of an ordinance for a budget amendment in the Parks Department. Councilmember Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks Department needs to purchase a Skid steer cement mixer at a cost of $7,700 in order to complete the rubber walking trail. Also, an additional $400 is needed above the current available capital balance to replace a broken toolbox. They would basically have a reduction of $8100, and then the additional capital outlay of $8100 for a net change of zero. So, I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for final reading approval of the change to the budget adjustment.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Final reading of an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2019-2020 budget. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. South Carolina law requires Town Council to adopt a balanced budget each year. Budget revenue and expenditures are attached, as well as the draft ordinance. The budget has been adjusted from first reading to include contracted-out social media work at $50,000, with funding to come half from the Enterprise Fund and half from the Vision Plan. Additionally, the social media position included in first reading has been taken out, and a Parks Department position has been added at a grade six. The additional funding needed for the Parks position will come from the Vision Plan. Make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Manis, second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
Just like to point out again how many years in a row that we have not raised taxes in our budget, and what is that number again? 29 years. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of old business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Final reading of an ordinance to provide the fiscal year 2019-2020 tax levy. Councilmember Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. South Carolina law requires Town Council to adopt the tax levy each year. Attaches the draft ordinance for the tax levy for fiscal year 2019-2020. I make a motion for final reading approval.
Councilmember Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. At this time, we will move into new business. Our first item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Cornes. First reading of an amendment to the sign ordinance. Councilmember Cornes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In September, the Greater Lexington Chamber of Commerce presented the Town with several suggested amendments to the sign ordinance. From these suggestions, staff presented five sign ordinance changes to the Planning Commission for their review. The Commission reviewed these recommendations and endorsed two of them. The two that were endorsed will adopt a new commercial center definition for the sign ordinance, and eliminate new billboard or off-premise sign placements in the Town Limits. Staff recommendations that were not able to receive a positive endorsement allowed additional signage at construction sites, established regulations for umbrella signs, and allowed additional signage in commercial centers. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Cornes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
If I could.
Yes, sir. Mr. Poole.
Is the motion to adopt the Planning Commission's recommendations, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cornes makes a motion. Mr. Baker, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Pine Ridge Police Department. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, sir. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Pine Ridge Police Department. The proposed agreement is attached. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Manis, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Ron Williams. First reading of an ordinance entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Pine Ridge Police Department. Councilmember Ron Williams.
Thank you, sir. The Lexington Police Department is entering into a mutual aid agreement with the Pine Ridge Police Department. The proposed agreement is attached. I make a motion for first reading approval.
Councilmember Williams makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Manis, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Accommodations Tax. Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee met on May 1, 2019, to review accommodations tax projects, requesting funds from the fiscal year 2018, 65% fund allocation. A spreadsheet listing the requests and the accommodation tax committee's award recommendations is attached for council's review and approval. Award amounts equal this year's available funds of $124,867. Additionally, a budget provided by the Greater Lexington Chamber and Visitor Center regarding the designation of fiscal year 2018, 30% advertising and promotion special fund is attached. The fiscal year 2018 chamber designated 30% amount is $57,357.60. I make a motion for council approval.
Councilmember Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Cornes, second. Some motion, any further discussion?
No further, no further discussion, but I would like a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Mr. Cornes.
I would, but I serve as liaison to this, and I just would like to give a shout-out and a thank you to everybody that serves on this committee and invest their time to make good investments with this money.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Cornes. That was a well-earned thank you to that committee. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Lyle. Boards and Commissions Reappointments. Mr. Lyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The terms for the following boards and commissions members will expire June 30th, later this month, and reappointments must be approved by council. The Advisory Committee, Edith Harmon, Mary Stokes Clark, Lauren Palkowski, Bill Reese, Latoya Reed, Historic Preservation Board, Chuck Corley and Jan Westmoreland, Planning Commission, John Bartlett, Traffic Committee, Susan Runan, Clyde Smith, Mark Churchill, Bob Farrell, Jim Wigglesworth, and Rosemary Wilson. And we also currently have vacancies as follows. Advisory Committee has two vacancies. Board of Zoning Appeals has two vacancies. Building Code Board of Appeals has two vacancies. Historic Preservation has one vacancy, and Traffic Committee has two resident-of-town Lexington vacancies. And Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for council approval of these reappointments.
Councilmember Lyle makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Baker.
So, I've been beating the drum. We got all these vacancies on these boards and commissions, and I would like to offer a challenge to some folks in the Bar Lake neighborhood, Settlers Point neighborhood in the Palm Meadow Hall neighborhood, for the folks specifically in those neighborhoods to submit some applications so we can get some of these vacancies filled. And again, the Traffic Committee, I mean, we've got a lot of traffic issues. We need our citizens to be engaged with what we've got going on and to fill those, and I'd say they're all important. The Advisory Committee has some very important work going on with the Census in 2020. The Board of Zoning Appeals is dealing with folks, business owners, who are appealing decisions that have been made, and Historic Preservation, obviously, that's a hot topic this last week, and then the Building Code Board of Appeals. All of those are important, and we solicit your engagement. And again, Bar Lake neighborhood, Settlers Point neighborhood, and Palm Meadow Hall neighborhood, we'd love to see some applications submitted.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anyone else? Yes, Ms. Manis.
Mr. Baker, did you pick those neighborhoods because we don't have people from those neighborhoods, or just because those were the ones you wanted?
It was just, they were the first three that came to mind.
Gotcha. Okay. That's a good reason.
Anyone else?
I would've said my neighborhood, but we already got a couple on there, so.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Steve Baker. Boards and Commission, I'm sorry, we just read that one?
No.
I'm sorry. That was reappointments. This is Boards and Commissions Appointments. Councilmember Baker.
Speaking of those applications, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. A Boards and Commissions application was received from Ms. Ashley Holmes, who expressed an interest in serving on either the Advisory Committee or the Traffic Committee. Ms. Holmes is a town resident, and her application is attached. A Boards and Commissions application was received from Mr. Adam Deloche, who expressed an interest in serving on the Advisory Committee. Mr. Deloche is a town resident. His application is attached. Staff recommends placing Ms. Holmes and Mr. Deloche on the Advisory Committee, which has just begun work on the Complete Count Committee for Census 2020. I make a motion for council approval of appointments.
Very good. Mr. Baker makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Lyle, second. Some motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lyle.
I'd just like to add that I do know Adam Deloche personally, and I'm excited that both of them want to be on the Advisory Committee. I think they'll do great in this. Councilman Baker mentioned earlier this important duties they've got coming up this year with the Census, so as the liaison do that, I would like to see them both approved for the Advisory Committee.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Kathy Manis. Appointment to the Golden Hills Special Purpose Tax District Commission. Ms. Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Scott Chamberlain has resigned from the Golden Hills Special Purpose Tax District Commission. Harold Tumer has been recommended to Town Council by the Golden Hills HOA to be one of the town representatives on the commission. Mr. Tumer has been a resident of Golden Hills for four years and has been active in the[1764.83] Mr. Tumer has been a resident of Golden Hills for four years and has been active in the HOA. Mr. Tumer is a local business owner with a background in higher education. Since retiring as the Dean of Agriculture at the University of Wyoming, he has opened restaurants in South Carolina, North Carolina, and Mississippi, as well as owned commercial real estate in South Carolina and Mississippi. Upon approval by town council, the recommendation of Mr. Tumer will be submitted to county council for final approval. Additionally, the HOA has recommended directly to county council the appointment of David Proctor as their HOA representative to fill the vacancy left by the resignation of Tom Cosmo.
Cosmato.
Yeah, Tom. The HOA representative does not require town council approval. I make a motion for council approval of the recommendation to Lexington County Council of Howard Harold Tumer for the Golden Hills Special Purpose Tax District Commission.
Very good. Ms. Manis makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Williams, second. Some motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Our next item of new business is from Councilmember Todd Carnes. Leadership Lexington County Project Funding Request. Councilmember Todd Carnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we have some Leadership Lexington County representatives here, so if y'all wouldn't mind, would you step up while we do this motion? And then we'll give you guys a chance to speak to us in just a minute. Leadership Lexington County Class of 2019 is raising funds for a project benefiting the Central Midlands Transitional Retreat, a 501(c)(3) organization in the town of Lexington supported by Christ Central Ministries, which provides housing specifically for United States veterans. They have requested a $5,000 Command Sergeant Major sponsorship donation towards the cost of construction, of constructing a pavilion recreation area and making improvements to the entrance of the facility. This sponsorship level would provide a plaque honoring the town at the facility and two eight-by-eight bricks with the town logo at the pavilion. And so, Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate for them to speak now or after our?
After the motion.
So, I would make a motion that we fund this request at $5,000 per their request.
Very good. Mr. Carnes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Baker, second. Is that motion, any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Ms. Williams.
Could y'all explain to me a little bit about how much y'all have raised so far?
So far, we have raised, and thank you so much for having us here, Mr. Mayor and team council. So far, we've raised about $14,000 in cash, and we're also probably around 30 with the in-kind donations, picnic tables, stuff like that, from various sponsors.
I'm being presumptuous. Are you Ms. Richardson?
I am.
Ally Richardson?
Yes, I am, thank you.
If you don't mind, just state your address for the record.
It's my personal or the business? My business. I'm Ally Richardson. I'm the branch manager at Ameris Bank, and we're located at 701 West Main Street in Lexington.
Very good, Ally. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else you'd like to share with us?
Sorry, go ahead.
I just want to say, Central Midlands Transitional Retreat is a wonderful facility. Right now, they're currently housing 86 vets, getting them back into society. I personally see, as the branch manager, they send in a lot of their veterans over to my bank. We help them establish a bank account, help them get their funds direct deposited into this account, and I've seen a lot of good things coming from these vets.
That's great. I think I can speak for all of us up here. We were really kind of shocked at how many vets are actually at that facility on a daily basis and right here in our small town of Lexington. So, we're glad and honored to serve you and grant you this funding request.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Williams.
So, from my calculations, you've got 14 in cash and 30 in kind. That puts you short a little bit of money there still, right?
Right. Our goal was to raise 50,000. Yes, sir.
Has anybody else pledged any money to you?
Um, right now, we've went, we've got a 2,500 from West Columbia. We're working on Lexington County, but, and hopefully, the five with y'all.
I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll give $500 if you get, Mr. Baker, give $500.
I'm in. I'm in.
All right.
We'll throw down the gauntlet to the county, too, to see if they can match us. We threw down 5,000, too. I mean, this, you know, this is a little bit of town of Lexington, so maybe the huge county of Lexington County can come bail y'all out and make sure y'all get over the top of that thing. Well, congratulations on it. What a wonderful thing to, what a wonderful project to pick and get behind.
Thank you so much.
Best of luck to you. Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
Just want to add, so I was the class of 2017 with Leadership Lexington County, and so I know all, and I was the project leader, so I know all about the challenges of putting this project together, and it's kind of like herding cats, trying to get everybody on the same page and do things with you. And so, I just want to voice my appreciation for what you guys are doing. And then also, Chief Green took me through this place, and we kind of like toured it, talked to the director and whatnot, and just, I know what the challenge was like to narrow down and pick a 501(c)(3) to partner with, and I'm just like really grateful that you guys picked this one. And I'm grateful, I mean, we haven't voted yet, but I'm grateful for our council and standing with the veterans and doing this. And so, I just want to say thank you, and we appreciate what y'all are doing.
Thank you.
Would any of your other guests like to say anything?
Thank y'all for having us. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anything else? Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, we will hear announcements from Councilmember Kathy Manis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would like to extend our condolences to the Kaufman family and the loss of Hamp Kaufman. Mr. Kaufman was a great leader in Lexington, and he will be missed by so many in our community. So, I know many people have been praying and thinking about the Kaufman family. We'd also like to extend our deepest sympathy to Mayor Bobby Dyer and the city of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and the tragic loss of 12 people last Friday, 11 of the whom were municipal utility employees. That was a terrible event in the city of Virginia Beach, and our sympathies with them. The mayor mentioned several town events held at the Ice House Amphitheater, including the Market at Ice House, which is one of my favorites. If you have not been to the Market at Ice House on Saturday, it's awesome. I know last week, Councilman Lyle and Baker did a live Facebook, and then this week, Councilman Baker and I did. So, there are lots of things, lots of good fruits and vegetables, and beautiful sunflowers, and so, honey, all that good stuff. Y'all going down on Saturdays. This Friday, WOMG 98.5, Columbia's classic hit radio, will host a free tribute to the Rolling Stones with the Delta Circus, and the concert starts at 7:00. So, that's Friday night, and it is free. This Saturday, the Lexington County Museum will host a free haunted house tour at 8:00 PM, and it will begin at the Ice House Amphitheater. Attendees will learn about some of the murders, trials, and other crimes that occurred on Main Street in the 19th and 20th centuries. Like, nothing like that's happening now. The Lexington Museum will also host their annual Family Day at the museum on Fox Street on June 22. This also is a free event that will feature children's activities, and visitors will be treated to hot dogs and drinks. On June 15, there will be this Sourwood Honey Tribute with special guest, The Ramblers. The concert starts at 7:00, and the tickets are $10. This past Saturday was the kickoff for the Lexington County Library's Summer Reading Program, Universe of Stories. Go to www.lexcounty, L-E-X-C-O-L-I-B-R-A-R-Y.com to find out how to register for the Summer Reading Program. Also, this Sunday, June 9, from 3:00 to 4:00, the Lexington Main Library and the Friends of Lexington will host New York Times bestselling author Patty Callahan Henry, who will be reading from her latest novel, The Favorite Daughter. You can call 785-2680 for more information. There will not be a Board of Zoning Appeals meeting in June. The Planning Commission will meet on June 19 at 8:00 here in council chambers. Some boards and commissions have state-required training, and our second date for training is June 21 from 2:00 to 5:00 in the third-floor conference room. Council will meet again for our summer schedule on July 8 for council's work session at 6 and council's regular meeting at 6:30. Town Hall will be closed on Thursday, July 4, in observance of Independence Day. And I would like to congratulate all the new high school graduates in Lexington and wish you much success in your future. We hope that you all have a fun in the sun and a safe summer, and thank you for watching your town council in action tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Manis. That was a lot.
That was a lot. I got a ton top.
Anyone else have anything they'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Baker.
All right, you can go ahead, Ron. Go ahead.
Mr. Williams.
Major Davis.
Yes, sir.
Last week, Officer Williamson and Officer Clintick visited my wife's classroom over at Lexington Elementary and did a magic show, and if you would, I'd like you to recognize them. They did an outstanding job. The kids were, let's say, she had given them popsicles before they got there, so let's say they were a little sugared up and a little wild. But he did a great job, and really appreciate him spending that time with those kids.
Well, thank you for saying that, officer. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Baker.
I just want to also recognize the McCutcheon family and the Riker family, and just the terrible tragedy that happened last weekend. And so, I just want to bring up Tammy Riker's name as well. And then also, in regards to our farmer's market, so, we put a lot of time and energy and Walker, is Walker in here? I just want to recognize you and say thank you. This thing is so much better than it was last year, and I am very excited for what we're building there.